Mr. Chairman, we're live.
I'll get this one louder. We'd like to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to Order. Welcome, everybody. We'll get started with the invocation. I'll call on Dr. Phan.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we truly delight in your presence. We thank you for your goodness and your grace. Too often, you're better to us than we deserve, and too often, you are redeeming us and being a God of a second chance. As we gather together tonight, we seek your face. We ask for the presence of your Spirit. Guide our minds, guide our thoughts. Help us make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. These petitions we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the pleasurable allegiance, if I can talk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next on the agenda, we have Approval of Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of minutes from our September 2nd meeting.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Proclamations and Special Recognitions. I'll be taking this first one, and I'll ask if Ms. Tracy Andrew and whoever else you'd like would come up to the front. Yeah, that's it. All right. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, whereas it is a privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 238th anniversary with patriotic ceremonies and activities, and whereas this historic milestone in American history allows us to reflect back on our nation's past and consider the sacrifice and determination our forefathers had to bring us to this day, and whereas we honor the contributions of our nation's architects by looking to our future, encouraging this and future generations to keep the faith and to protect and defend this magnificent document. Now therefore Greenville County Council does honor and recognize our great American heritage and encourage all citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by protecting those freedoms that are guaranteed to us through this document and do hereby proclaim September 14th through the 20th, 2025, as Constitution Week in Greenville County.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up on Proclamations and Special Recognitions, we have National Forensics Science Week with Counselor Collins.
If I may, Captain Kellett and your crew, if you'd love, that would be great. Come on. As you fill in, I'm going to start reading. Amen. All right, here we go. Proclamation on a motion by Counsel Collins, members of Greenville County Council wish to recognize the National Forensic Science Week in Greenville County, whereas the practice of forensic science is a vital public service, access to quality forensic analysis dramatically improves the objective investigation of criminal activity, leading to the exoneration of the innocent and the prosecution of the guilty within the criminal justice system, and whereas crime scene investigators provide unbiased, accurate, reliable analysis of evidence. These highly trained, educated, and experienced professionals exemplify the core values of our legal system, and whereas in supporting Forensic Science Week, the county of Greenville wishes to honor the hard work, dedication, and diligence of all those who work in the field of forensic science across the nation, in the state of South Carolina, and specifically here in Greenville County, and whereas the hardworking people that compose our forensic science organizations deserve universal regard and appreciation for their commitment to proper scientific investigation for the cause of justice, and whereas from Sunday, September 14th to Saturday, September 20th, 2025, the Greenville County Department of Public Safety Forensic Division alongside laboratories across the United States will be celebrating the 13th Annual Forensic Science Week to acknowledge the value of forensic science research and the role of crime scene investigators while informing the public of the current capabilities and future challenges facing the field of forensic science. Now therefore, be it resolved that Greenville County Council does hereby proclaim September 14th through 20th, 2025, as National Forensic Science Week in the county of Greenville, and encourage all citizens to join and express an appreciation for the people, the facilities, and the technologies that make this reliable forensic science possible in our community. Captain Kellett and your crew, thank you so much on behalf of the people of Greenville County.
Thank you, Counselor Collins.
Hold on, we need one more.
All right, before we get to the next agenda item, I just wanted to mention, I almost forgot, Counselor Long has joined us digitally, just for the record. Next on the agenda, we have Appearances on Current Agenda Items.
Mr. Chairman, we have six speakers. The first is Diane Vreeland. Her topic is 10B Cluster Housing Moratorium.
Welcome, Ms. Vreeland.
Hi, how are you all? Good evening. Diane Vreeland, on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, 413 Heather Fols Lane, Simpsonville, I am greatly in favor of implementing a moratorium on cluster developments and open space residential development in Greenville County in order to properly renew and amend Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and Section 7:2 of the Greenville County Zoning Ordinance pursuant to state law and county policy. As noted in your proposed ordinance, there have been public concerns regarding misinterpretation and consistent application, as well as impacts to rural character, infrastructure, and citizen quality of life. This ordinance also seeks to preserve its original intent while ensuring that future cluster developments align with responsible planning principles, the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, and the needs and values of our residents. This is necessary due to developers taking advantage by placing these developments in floodlands, forested areas, and farmland. In addition, roads and retention ponds were labeled as open space to meet the requirements. To make matters worse, buildings were allowed to abut sidewalks with no green space between the two and are not at all harmonious with existing properties. Recently, I've been asked by some of your constituents if developers had made contributions to current and past council members' campaigns, and other people have approached me and stated that some of you have accepted contributions in the past. I have no idea, but would like for all of you to go on the record here today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to Today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to
Viewshed and the headwaters that are vulnerable to pollution that might also flow downstream. Truly, the ESDPM zoning district amendment, ESDPM zoning district amendments before you tonight represent the next step we can take to combat habitat disruption, impaired water quality, and disturbance of the mountains ecological balance. Importantly, these amendments start a conversation on environmental protection that we can continue for Paris Mountain as well as other treasured areas of Greenville County. We all know that once iconic landscapes and precious mountain, precious places like Paris Mountain are gone, they are gone forever. This new ESDPM framework will allow us to better protect one of the spaces that makes Greenville County so unique, and we look forward to remaining engaged in related advocacy from Paris Mountain and beyond. To conclude, I thank you all again for your efforts to better protect Paris Mountain's sensitive environment for all who cherish it. Tonight, you can take one last step to preserve this unique landscape and its ecosystem from harm by supporting Item 10B on your agenda and voting favorably on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poole.
Mr. Chairman, the last speaker is Greg Valente. His topic is 10B, text amendment for Paris Mountain.
Welcome, Mr. Valente.
Thank you. Somebody told me it would get easier to do public speaking if I did more of it, and I think they were lying. Mr. Thompson, I think I have good news for you. I hope, I'm here again to ask for your vote in favor of the ESD tax amendment. We're now at the precipice of the first meaningful change to zoning for Paris Mountain in two generations. It's taken a lot of work to get here, research into protections for other mountain communities, hundreds of hours in conversations and meetings with neighbors, and many discussions with Councilor Shaw, who has supported us in our efforts from its beginning two years ago. In the midst of all this, and with your help, we organized the wider community, the wider community in the Save Paris Mountain effort. In that, we fought against annexation for a hotel that would have permanently changed the mountain's character and made Altamont Road less safe. This ordinance improves safety by limiting future development on Paris Mountain to reasonable levels and by removing the last vestiges of high-density and commercial uses that have always been a threat to it. At the same time, and this is for Mr. Thompson, it grandfather's property boundaries, which allows homes to be built on existing lots that are smaller than the new subdivision lot size requirements going forward. And lastly, it protects and preserves a valuable natural resource for all of Greenville County. Thank you all for the conversations we've had, for your input, for your advice, and thank you to your staff for helping us navigate the procedural and legal complexities of putting this text amendment together. Most of all, thank you for helping to protect Paris Mountain.
Thank you, Mr. Valente. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. We'll start with A, Amendment to Ordinance Number 5577, Section 1 Sunset Provision. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of reviewing comments from the public regarding ordinance to amend ordinance number 5577 with update design standards for septic tank developments in unzoned areas of the county and established countywide repair and buffers requirement to change the sunset provision for ordinance from January 2, 2026 to January 2, 2028. Do we have any speakers, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bradley, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
I would declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you. Item B is Terrapines Estates Special Tax District Boundary Adjustment. Councilor McGahey.
Item 7B, Terrapines Estates Special Tax District Boundary Adjustment. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to enlarge the boundaries of the Terrapines Estates Special Tax District to include real property continuous to the district located at 321 Terramont Drive.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McGahey, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
So we'll consider that closed. Item C, Lake Cunningham Fire District Continuation of Millage. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lake Cunningham Fire District Continuation of Millage. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a resolution to provide for the continuation of current ad valorem property tax to be levied by the Lake Cunningham Fire District. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak to this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you. We'll move to Item D, South Greenville Area Fire District Continuation of Millage. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. South Greenville Area Fire District Continuation of Millage. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a resolution to provide for the continuation of current ad valorem property tax to be levied by the South Greenville Area Fire District. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak to this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Madam Clerk, thank you. There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you. Item E, Dunkland Fire District Millage Request. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dunkland Fire District Millage Request. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a resolution to provide for the millage rate to be levied by the Dunkland Fire District. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak to this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you, Councilor Collins. Next on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is Resolutions. Start with A, Greenville County Equipment Master Lease Vehicle Replacement. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville County Equipment Master Lease Vehicle Replacement. Mr. Chair, make a motion that I move for the adoption of a resolution authorizing a master lease agreement in the principal amount of not exceeding $7 million relating to the finance of equipment for public purposes, authorizing the execution and delivery of various documents and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. B, 2025 Augusta Grove 10 Filo Assignment. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 2025 Augusta Grove 10 Fee in Lieu of Tax Assignment. Mr. Chair, the motion I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing and approving the assignment and assumption of a fee in lieu of tax agreement in between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Augusta Grove 10 Investors LLC of the matters related thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item C, Lake Cunningham Fire District Continuation of Millage. Councilor Collins.
Chair, Lake Cunningham Fire District Continuation of Millage. The motion I move for adoption of resolution to provide for the continuation of current ad valorem property tax to be levied by the Lake Cunningham Fire District.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. D, South Greenville Area Fire District Continuation of Millage. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. South Greenville Area Fire District Continuation of Millage. Make a motion that I move for the adoption of a resolution to provide for the continuation of current ad valorem property tax to be levied by the South Carolina Area Fire District.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The is ordinances at third reading. We'll start with CZ 2025. Did I miss Dunkland?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Dunkland.
Q. T.
Move back to Item E, Dunkland Fire District Millage Request. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dunkland Fire District Millage Request. Motion I move for adoption of resolution to provide for the millage rate to be levied by the Dunkland Fire District.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we will move to ordinances at third reading, CZ 2025-045. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 10 East Main Street, Taylor's requesting rezoning from R 20 to O D. I move to adopt this ordinance at third reading.
Favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-048. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 145 Chapman Grove Road requesting rezoning from RR 3 to AG. I move to adopt this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-050. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Property located at Avenue Road in Richards Avenue requesting rezoning from R- MHP to R 6. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item B, Text Amendment Article 4, Definitions Article 6, Table 6.1 and Article 8, Section 8.5, ESDPM Environmentally Sensitive District, Paris Mountain, CZ 2025-053. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you. Zoning Tax Amendment CZ 25-053 to amend Article 4, Article 6, Table 6.1, and Article 8, Section 8.5, the environmental sensitive district of Paris Mountain of the Greenville County zoning ordinance to strengthen environmental protections for the ESDPM. I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. And I believe we may have an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to your agenda items, I would propose an amendment to add a Section 8, 5.10, under the tree save and tree preservation. The provisions you see there, I can read them out, but they just mirror the statute 4823-205, South Carolina Code of Laws, and that has to do with exemptions for forestry activity on forest lands. And so many of these lands in the district have forestry uses, and so we're not even allowed, this is a, we're preempted from even regulating forestry activities or forestry lands. So that's all it is. My amendment just mirrors the statute. I'd ask you to vote in favor of it.
All right, thank you. Does everybody understand the motion to amend the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilor McGahey.
If I may, I'd like to introduce another amendment, and according to our rules, Section 4, B 3 at third reading, introduce another amendment with the council, council vote that's in the, in the positive.
Proceed.
So, well, we have to have a vote that we're allowed to make an amendment.
I think we've already.
Well, actually.
Mr. Attorney.
Asking me, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's two things we got to deal with now. Because the requirement, the writing requirement, there's a notice requirement as well, so in order to hear one that hasn't been sent and writing and in the packet, the notice requirement will have to be suspended, and then the rule of writing will have to be suspended, and then at that point, if both of those things are done, then a motion to amend can be entertained.
Yeah, I'm just reading our rules right here on third reading. The question shall be adoption of the ordinance is passed on second reading, and no amendment shall be in order unless permitted by a majority vote of the council members. The council shall allow public comment, use the same rules and time limits outlined in Section 3E. If the council agrees to the introduction of an amendment at third reading, it will be considered at the next regularly scheduled meeting, and its passage shall be governed by the provisions of subsection four below. Amendments permitted at third reading must strictly pertain to the subject matter of the ordinance as was passed the second reading.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, then I misunderstood, because if we are, if he's, if you're proposing to make a mo, to amend and it not be voted on tonight, then yes, you can then do it.
Right, well, that's what I'm proposing, is that we will amend it, and we'll have to wait till the next meeting.
Okay.
There's something in here that I can introduce to you right now if you'd like.
We still gonna have to suspend the notice.
Notice rule and the written rule, yeah.
Would you like me to make that motion now? If we could make a motion to suspend the notice requirement.
All right. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilor McGahey.
I'd like to, if we go to the ordinance, please, the ordinance is Section 812, sorry, The short-term rentals, it reads, short-term rental, rentals of less than 30 days can only operate when the property owner resides on site and occupies the property during the short-term rental period. As I remember, that was not what was talked about earlier. I'd like to read that the short-term rental are rentals of less than 30 days.
Period.
Period.
Mr. Attorney.
Now that it's being introduced under the rule that we're following right now, then its consideration of this amendment will be at the next meeting, and.
And then we'll proceed with.
So if y'all are allowing introduction of amendments on that, then that would be the case.
Okay.
That's right, that's correct.
So now we're at the amendment, the motion as amended.
No, you're at the motion, motion to be, allow the amendment to be considered, and then after that, if that passes, we go to next session, our next meeting, which would be October 2.
Correct.
Where the amendment motion would be made.
All right. Does everybody understand that motion?
Can I just ask a question, though? Because we did have a conversation about should we even have short-term rental in here because of not really defining short-term rental somewhere else, so I'm wondering.
Exactly, it was my question, I thought that would be out of there. We had talked about it afterwards, it would be rentals of less than 30 days, and that would be it, because I think we're gonna get into some property owner rights if the property owner has to reside on site and occupies it, and we don't have a comprehensive policy in Greenville County yet, and I think we're gonna step into some water we don't want to get into legally. I'm not opposed to that language being in there later on, but I think as a body, we need to protect the county from suits that could arise out of that. Right now, I don't think that's been vetted by our attorney, that language to the point that it needs to be, or we should establish a policy.
I'm certainly in favor of considering it and just having a further conversation about it, for sure.
I, I would ask, I'm sorry, I would, I would ask that we just pass it as is now, as agendaed, and really what's gonna happen here, if we pass it, somebody has a short-term rental, then they have an issue with this, then they can contest it, but that, I don't think that's gonna happen by the time we can change it later. I'd rather just pass this thing now as it is and let these folks have what they've worked for, for years, and not keep holding it up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Would it be, would it be possible also, we could actually pass it and then reconsider it at our next meeting and then make the amendment at the next meeting?
Sure.
Would actually be possible under our rules? So we could pass it as is with the amendments that were in the packet, and then just make a motion to reconsider next time with, and had they written amendment in the packet, and we could maybe do that all at once?
That would work for me, for sure.
I'll just have to ask, too, while attorney's looking at something, I believe, but I think, did Councilor McGahey make that motion already, or has the motion been made yet?
I think I had stated what the motion needed to be, but then he hadn't actually proceeded to make that particular motion, which was a motion that you allow an amendment at third reading, so I don't think it's on the floor, as far as I heard. The clerk could correct me if I'm wrong on that, Miss Hurd.
Just make sure we're procedurally sound moving forward.
Well, Mr. Attorney, would that meet our, if we do that, will that meet our notification requirements so we can, in fact, at the very next meeting, change that language immediately?
Well, yeah, because you would do, if anybody wanted to reconsider, we would do a memo, a notice memo ahead of time for the agenda packet.
Okay, well, can you prepare that for me, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I withdraw my motion, then.
All right, so we are back to the motion.
As amended.
As amended. Does everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is Item C, Amendment to Ordinance Number 5577, Section 1 Sunset Provision. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 5577, which updates design standards for septic development in unzoned areas of the county and established countywide repair and buffers requirements to change the sunset provision for the ordinance from January 2, 2026 to January 2, 2028.
Thank you. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please.
Roll call, please.
Been requested?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, you have nine in favor, one in opposition, and one absent. Ms. Long has cast her vote in favor.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. We'll move to Item D, Land Development Regulations Amendment, Cluster Housing Moratorium. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading, ordinance to temporarily suspend the approval of new cluster developments and open space presidential developments in Greenville County through a moratorium and order review and amend Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and Section 7.2 of the Greenville County zoning ordinance pursued to the state law and county policy.
Thank you. All in favor of the.
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested?
Me, too. I was trying to get you back.
Mr. Chairman, you have 11 in favor, no one opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I need to get it on, man.
Item E, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park, 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park, 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. Motion that I move for an adoption at the third reading, an ordinance to amend the agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park to include certain property and other matters related thereto. Motion is that I move to hold this item until October 7, regular council meeting, at which the time, the public hearing for this project is scheduled.
All right, thank you. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F, Terrapines Special Tax District Tax Levy. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Terrapines Special Tax District Tax Levy. Mr. Chairman, the motion I move for the adoption at the third reading, an ordinance to approve the Terrapines Special Tax District's petition for an increase to its current tax levy.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G, Foothills Fire Service Area Millage Request. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Foothills Fire Service Area Millage Request. Mr. Chairman, the motion that I move for the adoption at third reading, an ordinance to provide for the millage rate to be levied by the Foothills Fire Service Area.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on now to ordinances at second reading. Item A, Terrapines Estates Special Tax District Boundary Adjustment. Councilor McGahey.
Terrapines Estates Special Tax District Boundary Adjustment. I move for approval at second reading, and ordinance to enlarge the boundaries of the Terrapines Estates Special Tax District to include real property continuous to the district located at 321 Terramont Drive.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We will move to ordinances at first reading. Councilor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present for first reading, zoning ordinance CZ-2025-61 through CZ-025-65.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
First reading.
Oh, sorry, refer this to Planning and Development Committee.
But that would be cool if we could have voted all on it all at one time.
Would have worked.
Made it great.
We'll move on to Item B, General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. I present for first reading, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million Greenville County, South Carolina, general obligation bonds, Series 2025-C, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you, Councilor Collins. This one will stay on the council floor. Item C, Greenville County Redevelopment Authority Transfer of Property on Worley Road. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville County Redevelopment Authority Transfer of Property on Worley Road. I present for first reading, ordinance to authorize a transfer of 6.07 acres of real property located on Worley Road to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, and to authorize the execution of deeds and other documents and agreements related thereto.
Collins.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know there's no debate, but a point of order for the, in fact, may I ask the attorney a question? Who introduced this? Because according to the rules, it has to be if it's introduced by a person, it can stay here, or it hasn't been introduced by committee, it stays here. If it's not introduced by a committee, it has to go to the committee.
All right, go ahead. Address two things on this, because one is because it's at first reading, there's, we're not supposed to have any debate, but I gotta answer the question as best I can, which is, I don't recall, because it was in finance, it wasn't in, and, or P and D, where was it?
Had it been through committee?
It would have been, it sort of be through a committee.
It did, it went through finance, okay. My apology, that's why I wanted to make sure. Okay, I just didn't remember it in my head, so, okay.
It was finance.
But why would it be back at first reading, so the committee introduced it? Because I remember we.
It came through finance, yeah. This is a different property.
It started, it started in committee.
Okay. Thank you.
So this will stay on the council floor. Item D, Ordinance to Realign the Greenville County Planning Commission. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ordinance to Realign the Greenville County Planning Commission. As noted on the council agenda, I present for first reading, an ordinance to repeal Greenville County Ordinance Number 4086 and ordinance to amend Greenville County Ordinance Number 3203, so as to further define the responsibilities of the appointed county planning commission, and to integrate the planning staff with other county government functions, and to restore the prior provisions.
Thank you, Councilor Collins. We will refer this to committee of the whole. Next on the agenda is committee reports. Seeing none, we will move to public comments. Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers. The first is Ed Paxton, and his topic is the future of county council.
Welcome, Mr. Paxton.
Members of council, I've been around quite a while, since before we had the county council system, and I remember well the county supervisor. I remember that I could call him up and ask a question and get an answer. Might not like it, but I got an answer. Members of council, I sense a flood of distrust in this council form of government as practiced here in Greenville County, and I feel strongly that the time has come whereby the voters are given opportunity to affirm or reject having our county ruled by an administrator chosen by council, or one elected by popular vote of the citizenry. Very bluntly, we've had 50 years of councils' rubbish here in Greenville County, and the mess is obvious. Perfect example are, number one, the turning over of our hospital system to private enterprise; number two, this gaudy building we're in here just now; and number three, the very horrible mess with our codes and development. And number three, the very horrible mess with our codes and development group over on the south tower. Consequently, I'm requesting a question at next election be put before the voters regarding the administrator with an alternative for the county to quit the county council form of government in its entirety, including zoning and hustling new and industrial business. It's time to reassess where we are. We've got 50 to 60 years of history, and you can count the numbers of screw-ups on one hand, of major consequences here in this county in these 50 or 60 years. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Sean McDonald. His topic is fire departments.
Mr. McDonald.
My name is Sean McDonald. I live up in the cliffs of Glassy. I've been here about eight years. I spent 28 years in the LA County Fire Department, kind of watched how that developed. I'm currently a member of the Glassy Fire Commission. I'm here just as a citizen, though not as the fire commissioner. Kind of wanna speak to Counselor Fant's resolution to do a feasibility study on the fire department consolidation. I know it's kind of a bad topic among a lot of the fire departments, but it's kind of where, this county's grown so big, it's kind of where we need to go. And I also want you to consider the EMS situation part of it. I think the paramedics within the fire department, which we do at Glassy Mountain and a couple of other places in this county, is such a better system. So I hope you go through with the feasibility study. It's something I think is desperately needed. The son works for Greenville City as well. We've discussed it for over the last 10 years. You have 30-plus fire districts. I think the money you could save by consolidating, moving people around, you could probably sell some fire stations. You have more than enough equipment. You would provide a better level of service for a lot cheaper money. I just think it'd be a great thing. I'm glad to hear that it's something you guys are considering. And I'd be happy to, you know, lend my knowledge if there's some sort of citizen committee that looks into it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Next on the agenda, we have administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I just wanted to let you know of a celebration as part of Constitution Day tomorrow. There will be a bell ring at the Veterans Memorial Wall at 3:45 tomorrow. You need to bring your own bell, but they're gonna start with, and this is sponsored by SCDar, Daughters of American Revolutionary War. Starts at 3:45 at the Veterans Memorial, they will read the county council proclamation, and then read the Constitution preamble. And at 4:00 PM, they'll ring the bells for one minute. After that, there is another event they're having at 7:00 PM at the main library in Meeting Room A, where Dr. Robert Jeffrey, professor of government at Wofford College, will discuss foundations and principles of the American Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shaw.
May I ask, Administrator? The, Mr. Administrator, and I understand there's a lot of delicacies, delicacies, I guess. A lot of local governments are dealing with employees posting things on social media. Do you have any updates on, on our county with any of our employees?
Well, obviously, I can't talk about specific personnel issues, but we do have policies in place about that exact item with postings, whether it's on your personal or other accounts. The, any, the individuals that had been involved here have been terminated, so that that's no longer an issue here. But going forward, hopefully people will not do what they shouldn't do.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is request and motions by council members. Resolution to authorize a feasibility study regarding the consolidation of fire departments in Greenville County. Dr. Fant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noted on the council agenda, I would like to introduce a resolution to direct the county administrator to conduct a comprehensive study of Greenville County's current system of multiple independent fire sub-districts, to identify operational, financial, and governance challenges associated with that system, to evaluate the impact of the current structure on insurance service office, ISO, public protection classifications, and to assess the feasibility, benefits, and best process for consolidating fire services into a county-wide model or other structural options. And I would ask that this resolution be referred to the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Dr. Fant. We will refer this to committee of the whole.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman, real quick. I'd just like to, just take a 10-second moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, and I can probably speak for all my colleagues here in saying that none of us condone violence, and that the only way forward is dialogue, and that we should remember this gentleman who did that, and whether you're on, what other side of politics you're on, that that type of violence is just unacceptable, and that as a, as a county, we should take 10 minutes, just a 10, 10-second silence for him, please.
Absolutely. Let's do that now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. With that, I will entertain one final motion.
We adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.